Yes, we are.
Okay, thank you Mauricio. Good evening and welcome to the December 16, 2020 Planning and Zoning Meeting. I would, I am calling the meeting to order and I'd ask you all to join me in standing and saying the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the Republic of the
America and to the Republic
Stand, One Nation Under God.
Under God.
Under the Constitution and Justice for All.
Thank you, and I'd like to take roll call. My name is Catherine Moss, I'm the Chair. Do we have Mary Ferde yet?
Yes, you do.
Hi, Mary. John Bronco.
Yes, present.
Brad Cohen. Brad? He was here.
Sorry, I'm here. I just, my, my, I'm doing it on my phone because my computer was acting funny.
Okay. Coleman Pruitt?
I'm here.
Jackie Scott?
Here.
Jay Scheckman?
Present.
Bill Rotella?
Here.
Michael Weymouth?
Here.
Alright, so we have 100% attendance, thank you. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes from the November meeting?
I move to approve. This is Jay Scheckman.
Thank you, Jay. Is there a second?
Second, Mike Weymouth.
Thank you, Michael. Any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none and seeing no hands raised, aye. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? The minutes of the November meeting are unanimously approved. Thank you. As I said, we have 100% attendance, so we obviously have a quorum. Members of the public, if you wish to speak on any item tonight, you must raise your right hand and will soon be sworn in by either our clerk or our city attorney. So at this time, I'd like to ask any members of the public to stand and raise your right hand.
Can you please unmute the attendees, City Moderator? Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Can you say yes?
I do.
I do.
I do.
I do.
Thank you. Alright, so now we have, we are moving to the agenda. We have item number one, which is quasi judicial, so I'd like to get disclosures, and I will start with John Bronco.
Yes, spoke to applicant's attorney.
Okay, anything else, John? John, anything else?
Just spoke with applicant's attorney.
Okay, thank you. Brad?
Spoke, spoke with applicant's attorney.
Coleman?
I likewise spoke with the applicant's attorney.
Jackie?
Yes, spoke to applicant's attorney.
Jay?
Spoke with applicant's attorney and conducted a site visit.
Bill?
Spoke with applicant's attorney.
Mike?
Site visit.
I spoke to the applicant's attorney and I made a site visit. Alright, Ms. Gray, are you with us?
And I made a site visit, Mary Ferde.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mary.
It's okay.
Alright, Ms. Gray, are you with us?
She's coming up to the podium, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you.
I'm here.
Jay, before Dina starts, hang on one sec, Dina. Bill, Mike, and Jay, are you able to raise your hands in the Zoom chat, or do you not have that ability?
I don't have a keyboard.
Okay.
Last, last time we, we indicated by manually raising our hands and the gentleman up front here raised the hand on behalf of the chambers.
Alright, we'll do it that way again, thank you. Dina, you're up.
Thank you. Good evening, Dina Gray, Land Use Counsel for the applicant. And I am joined here tonight by the applicant, the owner of the property, Adam Gottsberger. We also have the architect, Sean Walsh, and the Adashi team, Chris Hagan, who is our traffic engineer. And then I believe on Zoom, we have our civil engineer from Keith. So I have a PowerPoint presentation for you, which I think I got it. See, I've been here enough times now, I got it right. Thank you. So tonight, we're here regarding a proposed aloft hotel. And this first slide is an aerial view of the subject property. It is located just west of Federal Highway along State Road 84. And the, the front lot is zoned B1, and approximately .3 acres. I'm not sure I'm getting echo. And then the, the rear lot is RO, the one that says "subject property" on it, that's RO lot, which is .62 acres, so for a total of .92 acres with an alley, 16-foot alley in between. This next slide just gives you an idea of, you know, the area and the, the location of the other buildings that are, are surrounding. And the existing conditions. The first, the first view that's labeled, one, it's facing east, a view of the southeast 24th Street, abutting front of the hotel. And two, is facing north, the, of the existing site and the location of the proposed hotel. So that middle slide here with all the arrows, it directs you to each, each point of where you're, where you're looking from. So like slide four, you could see the cigar superstore that's there. So it just gives you a basic idea of what's surrounding the hotel, or the proposed hotel. Now, this next slide is our site plan. As I had mentioned before, that the, the back lot there is RO, and that is where our surface parking is. And the front lot, which is B1, is where the hotel is. Now, this, the site plan meets code with the exception of the parking reduction that we're asking. So that's the reason why we're here tonight, which makes it a Level 3 site plan, is for the parking only. All, all other regulations in the ULDR have been met. So this next slide is rendering to give you an idea of what the proposed hotel will look like. It's very pretty and very aesthetically pleasing, as where you could see fronting State Road 84. Give a very nice, very nice view as you're driving down that road and, and really enhances that corridor. And here's some more slides. The hotel has amenities such as, you can see a rooftop, bars and cabana, its pool, has workstations inside. And inside it has like a grab-and-go food. So it has nice amenities for the guests of the hotel. Now, this, this is the north-south elevation. And the east-west, it is a 14-story and 138 rooms that we are proposing. So now, here is the landscape plan. And I put this in here because, one, when we had our neighborhood participation meeting, one of the comments that came up was, you know, can you add a little bit more landscaping? So, you know, of course, it is a tight site, but we are meeting code and just, you know, slightly above, we've tried to, we've revised the site plan to just add in as much as we can. And another topic that had come up was regarding the traffic circulation. So I know I have a bunch of slides on here, I'm not sure if we could maybe zoom in. Are we able to zoom in? Maybe on that one?
You said this one?
Yeah. So in our first site plan, when we presented it to the, the property owners in the, in the, in the neighborhood, they had some concerns about the delivery trucks that would be coming in and, and delivering. There was concern that they would use the alley that's on the, to the west of, on the Crown Plaza. Thank you, yes, that one. So what the design team did was, you know, they took their, their comments and their, you know, their thoughts into account and figured out a way how to mitigate that as a potential issue. And as you could see on that one that he circled in, Mauricio circled in red, they redesigned it so that the trucks can come in and out from Federal, so they'll come in, circle through, circulate through the exist, or the, the parking lot, the surface parking, and come right back out onto Federal Highway. As I had mentioned before, we're at a site plan Level 3 due to the, the parking reduction. So there's 138 parking spaces required, and we're providing 99, which is a 28% reduction that we're requesting, which we see as in line with other projects that have been approved by the city. Just by doing, and I would let, I would defer to staff to correct me if I'm wrong, but by doing a, a Google search on some other projects that the city had, had approved was the Hilton Marina Hotel, which online I just found that was, they were proposing 667 parking spaces, or, that was required. And they were proposing 502, which is approximately a 25% reduction. And then also, the Holiday Inn, which they were proposing 144 spaces and 102 were, were proposed. So we're right in line with the approximate percentage of reduction that the city typically finds that's approvable. Especially this type of project that is very close to the airport. It's, and so it's anticipated that most people, in general, that are going to a hotel would use, you know, a limo or Uber or Lyft. There's also a hotel van that picks up from the airport and also would take any visitors on like an hourly, regular basis, like drive into, into town or certain spots so that there is a van for the hotel, too. And we believe that we meet the parking reduction criteria. And we won't go over everything by, point by point, but the two major criteria are one that, that we meet the adequacy requirements, which we do, and we've been issued a capacity letter back in November. And also, the criteria, the specific criteria for a parking reduction, which states that, you know, if there's certain restrictions and actions that you're taking on the property or for the parking, that that would bring into compliance. And what we're doing is the, the parking where we are proposing to have 100% valet. So it would mitigate any concerns of anyone that would come in, any guests that would come in to use the hotel, they would be required to utilize valet. And as I had mentioned, the, the, the proposed hotel is very close to the airport, and there's sufficient safeguards in there to ensure that parking would be met. And it would be in my client's best interest to make sure that, that there was adequate parking for their guests. And I believe that might be my, this last slide is of the, is part of the traffic study. And Chris Hagan is here tonight. If you have questions regarding the traffic generation statement. In the statement, one thing that I'd like to point out is that during the peak hour, during daytime hour, it's anticipated that 86 parking spaces would be utilized at, at max peak time during the day. But if you have more questions regarding that, Chris is here to answer those questions as well as the rest of the team. And that's the end of our PowerPoint presentation.
Thank you, Dina. Is it the desire of the board that the city staff report be included as part of the record?
Oh, moved.
Was that Mary?
Yes, it was.
And Jackie, are you seconding that?
How did you know? Yes.
Yes, thank you. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously. I would like to double back for a moment and let everyone know that we are joined tonight by our Planning and Zoning Board Liaison, Ella Parker, who is the Urban Design and Planning Manager. Also joining us are Assistant City Attorney Shari Wallen and DeWayne Spence. And our court reporter is Bridget Chiapetta. Ella, would you like to introduce your staff that's joining us tonight?
Here, tonight from staff, from planning staff, we have Tricia Logan, Jim Hetzel, and Yvonne Redding. And from Transportation and Mobility, we have Benjamin Restrepo.
Terrific, thank you. I do not see any hands raised, so I am going to open the public hearing and ask if there are any members of the public wishing to speak on this item.
None in chambers.
Chair, we have one person signed up. Greg McAlune has signed up to speak.
Is Greg with us? Greg, are you there?
I'm not seeing him on the attendee list. Oh, he is.
Hi, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Hi, may I proceed?
Yes, please.
Thank you. I'm here on behalf of FLL Hotels, Inc. They're the owner of the Crown Plaza directly next door. I'd just like to start off with saying that there is no issue in terms of development on this site, in terms of a hotel use, and generally as a rule of thumb in regard to parking reductions. So I don't want to make those, you know, tired points that this board often hears. What I do want to state on behalf of the client, though, is that in terms of the site development, they are fitting quite a bit on the site that negatively impacts as it relates to the alleyway specifically. I'd like to just target in on the circulation pattern as it affects that alleyway. There's currently an apartment complex owned by Cooper Properties behind the Crown Plaza, which has about 10 backout parking spaces into that alley. Additionally, the Crown Plaza has a loading zone on the western side alley right there. And there are some, you know, constraints in terms of size. It's only 16-foot wide. And right now, a lot of people use it in terms of east and west, specifically those deliveries that I mentioned. The proposed site plan has only surface parking on one side of it, where all cars are required to cross over that alley, therefore creating an intersection in the middle of it, which is directly between 84 and US-1. US-1 between 4 to 6, 4 to 7 is one of the busiest roads, and any spill-off of traffic would be negatively affect all the surrounding businesses. If this property owner had the additional property to the east, they'd be able to internalize the parking and create a setup similar to how the Crown Royal Plaza was approved, has all internalized parking contained within as well as a contained loading zone, and it doesn't utilize that rear alley. Again, I understand the constraints with the site plan in terms of the land that the developer does own with it, and we have no issue in terms of developing that land. We would just like to make sure that it does not negatively impact the circulation of that alleyway because of the cross-traffic happening back and forth when there is east-to-west traffic.
Mr. McAlune, do you have any requests of the applicant that would, that would resolve the situation you're describing?
So these conversations were brought up by our client at the public participation meeting back in September with it. I know that some signage and those types of things were provided, but then again, it's hard to regulate human activity to such a degree with it. So really, our client is opposed to this development based on the traversing over the alley for the primary use of the parking. Typically, when we see surplus parking in terms of a surface lot across a right-of-way or an alley-type structure, it's for an excess amount of parking because the primary parking on-site isn't adequate with it. In terms of this, there is no park, primary parking on-site whereby all the parking activity has to cross over that alley. So in the interest of my client, I have to stand for the position that we do not agree with the project, and we would request that it not move forward. But if it does, certain conditions be implemented to grant an assurance that the traffic won't conflict with the loading dock to the west, as well as those parking spaces behind with it, in order to create a negative condition that spills over to 84 and US-1.
And, and do you have any solutions for that not happening?
Usually, and the solution would be internalized parking. We just know that's not possible considering the zoning and considering the different zoning categories. Honestly, the, the proposed aloft hotel would be better suited on their RO-zoned property, but we know in terms of zoning and land use, that's not effective with it. It, it's just the orientation isn't conducive to our client's activities operating their hotel when they did have all internalized parking in their loading dock oriented with it. So certainly signage would be appreciated if it's the will of the board to move forward with it. But I would just like to state on the record that it does negatively impact our client the way it's right now oriented with it. And barring a rezoning or a vacation of that road, it's almost as though the site operates as one unified development.
Thank you, Mr. McAlune. Ms. Gray, is your client amenable to adding signage to direct traffic in that area, through that alley, perhaps a little better?
Yes, absolutely. And, and we did discuss that, that we would be, we'll work with staff and what's permitted and what we can do in terms of signage.
Okay, so you would be amenable to that being a condition of approval?
Yes.
Okay, terrific. Does anyone have, or do we have any, anyone with any questions for Mr. McAlune, or any questions on this issue? I don't see anybody in this chambers raising their hand, and I don't have any hands raised. Are there any other members of the public wishing to speak on this item?
We didn't have anyone else sign up online to provide public comment.
Okay. I do believe we have one change to the first condition on the staff report. Yvonne, are you with us?
Yes, I am. I would like to correct the condition of approval on the page four. Number one should read, "Should the application for the parking reduction be approved, the parking reduction order must be executed and recorded in the public records of Broward County at the applicant's expense prior to final DRC."
Thank you. I'd like to close the public hearing. Mary, you have a hand up?
I was gonna make an attempt at a motion, is that okay?
Hang on a sec, I think Jay has his hand up. Jay?
Hi, yes, thank you Catherine. I had a question of staff? Or staff?
Go ahead.
I wanted to know if the valet parking arrangement with the 99 spaces on the surface lot would preclude them from entering into parking arrangements with other properties in the area as well? Or if, if that's still open as a possibility, that, that after this is completed, they would then be able to arrange into utilizing that lot to park at other properties throughout the city?
I would defer that to our Transportation Mobility Engineer, Ben Restrepo. I would defer that to our transportation mobility engineer, Ben Restrepo.
Good evening. This is Benjamin Restrepo. If I understand the question correct, you're asking if the applicant is able to park other uses on their site? Is that correct?
Yes, so we're allowing for a parking reduction here with the understanding that there would, if this were to be approved, with the understanding that those 99 spaces would be used for this hotel only. So the question is, is, would approving this with those conditions effectuate that? Or is there any other condition we would need to add to preclude the owner of the surface parking lot from entering into other arrangements with adjacent or nearby property owners to accommodate parking for other sites?
Okay, so if this parking reduction is approved and the the property owner decides to park other uses on this site, at that time, they would have to do another analysis to show that the parking demand for the other sites does not conflict with the parking demand hours of this site. And if their analysis checks out and they have enough availability on their site or capacity on their site to park vehicles, then yes, we do have the ability to go into another agreement, an off-site parking agreement with both parties to park vehicles on this site. But we would need the 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 property owners of the two different sites would need to formally apply, and they would have to come back to planning and zoning board to adjust the parking reduction.
Okay, any other questions?
I've got a question.
Michael?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Ms. Gray, good evening. How are you?
Good evening.
Hey, just a couple of operational questions real quick, just to be clear and correct me if I'm wrong. There is not a restaurant use in this facility, correct?
No, there isn't a restaurant component. It's, there's a grab-and-go, so there's a.
I just want to make sure that it's a sit-down restaurant?
No, it's not.
No meeting rooms?
No meeting rooms. They have like workstations where you could sit, you know, and put your laptop on a table.
If the local Board of Realtors wanted to have a 50-person meeting, you don't have the facilities to do that.
No, we don't.
And I'm assuming that most of your guests are gonna be train, I'm I'm in the hospitality business. So so mostly your your guests are gonna be in the transit, they're gonna be going to the port or the airport or the beach or something like that. Not a lot of drive-in.
Right, correct.
Okay. And lastly, they won't use the open areas of your pool areas for any kind of social gathering. My concern is, your request is reasonable from my perspective. My hotels have restaurants and they have meeting rooms and all that, and we never use up all the parking that we've got. So I do calculations all the time as to the need for parking, and you guys are okay in my book as far as that, as long as there aren't those other uses, but I just want to make sure. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Welcome. I have no other hands raised. I believe, Mary, you were gonna make a motion?
Hold on. Yes, I was gonna make a motion to approve with the staff conditions. And with the two conditions, I think, too, that Mr. McAlune suggested signage for the parking and assurance the traffic would not conflict with the neighbors, the neighboring properties. Are those the two you have down, Catherine?
Yes, as well as the changed condition number one that Yvonne read into the record.
Yes.
Terrific. Do I have a second?
I'll second, ma'am.
Thank you, Jay. And Shari, do you want to read the resolution before we vote?
Yes, I just wanted to ask, are you adopting the findings of fact from the staff? Okay, a resolution of the Planning and Zoning Board of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, approving a site plan level three development permit and a parking reduction for the property known as the ALOFT Hotel located at 501 Southeast 24th Street, Fort Lauderdale, Florida, case number PLN SITE 20070017.
Bridget, I think we're ready.
Okay, Mr. Pruitt?
Yes.
Mr. Rotella?
Yes.
Mr. Bronco?
Yes.
Mr. Wayman?
Yes.
Mr. Scheckman?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Vice Chair Furtick?
Yes.
And Chair Moss?
Yes, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Gray and team.
Thank you very much.
Item number two is quasi-judicial. I'd like to get disclosures, starting with Brad Cohen.
None.
Pullman?
None.
Jackie Scott? Um. None. Jay Scheckman?
Site visit.
Bill?
None.
Mike?
None.
John?
None.
Mary?
I visited the site and I had a letter from Christina Curry.
And I also visited the site and had a letter from Christine Curry. All right, I did not notice in Ella's recent communication who the presenter was for item number two.
Chair, it's Manuel Rodriguez.
Mr. Rodriguez, are you there?
Yes, he's logging in right now.
Great.
Madam Chair, I also got that email or letter from Christina Curry.
Thank you, Jackie.
I did as well.
Mr. Rodriguez, let us know when you're ready.
Hi, good evening, all. Thank you for taking us. This is Manuel Rodriguez from Seven Ave Design Studio. I have here with me as part of the team also Alex Medina, who is the civil engineer. We have Diego Van de Wiss, who is also the landscape architect. We have Karen Rivera, who is our permit and expediter and overall. And we have Salomon Handy, which is represents ownership. We are here to talk about Edgewood Villas. It's a five-unit cluster development. It's at, it's between, it's on Southwest 15th Avenue and between 31st Court and 31st Street. Let me share my screen for a second. Okay, have you seen a screen? Okay. All right. Hello?
Yes, we're here.
Okay, perfect. So it's a five, it's, I'm showing you where we are within the the context of city. The develop, our development is a five-unit cluster. It's a, it's sewn RD15. We have 17,871 square feet of land. It's so, and we've managed to design for five cluster units. These cluster units are grouped together so as to be as efficient and try to be as, break down the the site and try to generate the most amount of green area and 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 parcels for each part. I'm gonna show you now the site plan. This is our site plan showing basically our, the perimeter of our design, where we are within the the context. We see our five units, which are grouped together. And we have five private garages, each with, for two parking spaces per unit. One of the things we've added to this project and per some of the comments we've had, I know there was some concern about the amount of parking that we were having. Visitor parking, we presented to, to the, we presented for the DRC and to the, for planning and zoning, originally for only one parking space for visitors, but we managed to try to increase our parking stalls to two for visitors, which would take us above what is required in our, in our, by by code. So this would actually alleviate and some of the parking concerns that the neighbors would have with people parking on the swells and on the street. We would, we would have one more visitor parking than is required. It's making 12 parking spaces in, on the, on the, on the project. We, our project itself is a, it's a very, is a very low-scale project. It will mix well with the, with the rest of the context. We are keeping the trees within the site. And in that, we can speak further. The scale of the project is, is definitely goes with the context, and we've, we've made an emphasis to make, to to have this project be as as low, as less impact as possible to the site and really mix in with our, the neighborhood and everything. I mean, we believe Edgewood Village 5 is a, a project that will work well with the project. We've already gone through all the stages of 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 review, and we've hoped that you will, you will be able to push us forward towards this, towards this, the next phases. You can see here is the complex with how it meets these, these, this shoot, these, this is the complex. These, these pools are not really, this is from the first phase, but the project itself will, is very articulated and will be very, and we believe it's, it's gonna work well with the the rest of the context. Here are landscape plans. We show existing trees and proposed trees. We're relocating some palms for better condition. Maybe Diego could speak about this further if necessary. And we also have our civil information here. If there's any questions or any, or our presentation is done.
Mr. Rodriguez, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I I'm flipping through the plans, but I can't quite find the answer to my question. Do these units have? These are two-car garages, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And do they have parking pads in front of the garage? Or does an owner need to pull into their part, their garage?
They open the garage and they pull into the garages.
Okay, so there's no driveway in front of the garage?
There's, there's, you, you, are you still looking at my site plan?
Yes, I am.
So, okay, this is what we call a sort of a internal cul-de-sac, where you would drive in, and then you would come in into this private. They're actually very secluded, and they're very hidden, the garages. So you would never see the garage doors from the, from, from outside, from the street. So you would drive in into, yes, there's, you go into this private driveway, and then you enter each of the units from the back.
Lovely. So, and where is the gar, where is, where are the garbage and recycling and all that stuff?
Yes, ma'am. We've, we went through this process and we've spoken to waste and and the trash. We are, our units keep, we will keep our recycling in our, in our, in our, it's only five units. So we were recommended that our trash will be kept inside our units, and then it will be rolled by the ownership into this designated parking area on the, on 31st Court. And that's where the trash will be picked up.
So everyone will have three bins in their garage?
Yes, ma'am.
Which makes it more of a one-car garage?
Well, the garages are, 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 are a good size enough for, for trash and so forth. So they need to accommodate that way. We are, one of the things that we we talked about is that this would be a, a solution, and we think that it would definitely work well. I mean, we, we think that the, the garages will fit the, and will accommodate both the trash and the, and the cars.
Have you measured it out?
I would have to do that, I would have to do that. I've never measured the garages with the, with the cars. But I mean, the, the garages are, are 21 by 21 feet. I mean, that's, regular stall is 18 by, by, 18 by eight and a half. So we have on the size in the perimeter ample space to put these on, this, this trash. So we think it will, it will work. We definitely don't want, we don't, definitely don't want any, any trash cans on the property. We, everybody's, and we will have condo docs, and that's very important that we, we mention it. Condo docs will, will be, you know, written, and part of that is gonna be that, you know, everybody will have to take care of their trash and keep it inside their, their property.
Okay. Jackie, do you have a question?
Let me unmute myself. I had the same question, Catherine, that you did as it relates to the parking. And as I look on that interior, what he's talking about, you know, one person has a guest that parks in front of their garage, then you're really gonna, the other people aren't gonna be able to get in and out. As far as the trash goes, I see that as a big issue. I mean, everybody's gonna leave their garage, walk all the way out. So you're gonna have all these garbage cans, and then they're gonna bring it. Man.
I mean, that was.
That's a tough one.
That is the solution that was given us by the city. This visitor parking, there, there, nobody will be parking in front of other peoples because we have, we have designated parking for guests.
No, I under, I understand that, but I'm saying that that's it. You've got these two parking spots, and that's it. Because if anybody parks in the middle behind, you know, parallel to their, your garage door, they're gonna be, you know, blocking the other guy or.
Yeah, that, that wouldn't be allowed.
Are these, are these two-bedroom units or three-bedroom units?
There, these are, these are three-bedroom units.
Three-bedroom units with two-car garages and no parking. Okay.
Well, there is, there, there is parking provided for guests, and there's, and then we, we, we are meeting what's, 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 we're doing this by to code. I mean, we, we are providing what is.
Right. I understand, Mr. Rodriguez. This, this board has a long and tortured history with cluster dwellings because of the fact that your project meets code. We, we fully recognize that, but the code is flawed. It should require more guest parking. You're gonna find, I believe, that you will have homeowners parking in that visitor parking because you will have homeowners that move into this unit that have more than two cars. And we still are not exactly sure if the garages will be able to fit two cars with their three recycle bins in there. Is the water heater in the garage as well?
No, it's, it's a, it's a water heater is inside the unit.
Okay. What, all right, so.
I have one more question.
Sure.
Around, so if a person has guests coming and someone else has a couple of guests or one guest, where will their visitors park? In the neighborhood, correct?
I, I mean, I, I don't know. I imagine that there, I mean, if there's, it's a first-come, first-served. I mean.
Right, but but I mean, be realistic. I understand what you're saying. I can appreciate that. But again, if I have company coming and I live there and those two visitor, where do I tell my friends to park? In the neighborhood?
I'm, I don't know. They have to park. I don't, we want anybody parking in the neighborhood.
But I don't think it's possible for that not to happen.
Yeah, I mean, I can't predict what's gonna happen. We, we've over, we've added more parking spaces to try to mediate these situations. That's why we added, we've added more parking, visitor parking. I don't really see how we can, what else can be done. Because you can see the site, we're utilizing a lot of the site.
What if you reduced it to four clusters? Would that give you more parking?
If I reduce it to that, I mean, that's a major revision to the project. I, we've, at this stage right now, we, to really go through that, I will have to consult with ownership and all that part. We can probably take a look at this further and see what's happening, but I.
Probably be easier to sell with more parking.
I, I have a hand raised by Mary.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Catherine. I'm, could you tell us how many people came to your public participation meeting? What, did that include the Neighborhood Association, and did they take a position?
Yes, we were there. We exposed. I, I can't remember how many were. There were quite a few people. And yeah, they were all in favor. I mean, they, they raised issues about the parking as such. We told them that there was gonna be parking inside the, and there was, I don't know, approximately 15 people. I can't recall. That was, that was 2019, early 2019. that was uh two thousand nineteen, early two thousand nineteen.
Okay, um, Mary, anything else?
No, I just I I didn't. So you, so it's been, okay, it's been quite a while since you had that meeting then. Okay, thank you.
Chambers, um Jay, Mike, Bill, any questions?
I mean, I just want to, I mean, say, I mean, this is a residential project. We are, we're not expecting, it's not a venue. I mean, we're not expecting large numbers of parties. It were, I understand that your concern, but we, I mean, we are providing what's what's the code and we are trying to accommodate for even more parking. So I hope that the board will consider that, that we've made an effort to provide for more parking and try to be uh give the let's keep visitors away from the the neighborhood.
Sure. Um, anybody in the chambers have any questions? I see no hands, so I'm gonna open the public hearing. Do we have any members of the public wishing to speak on this item?
Chair, we had one person sign up to speak um who responded and said that they were speaking on the applicant's behalf, but they do have their hand raised as an attendee. This is Nicole Fiavaco.
Did you say she was part of the team?
Uh, she indicated on her form that she was part of the team, but she does have her hand raised, so.
Yeah, if the question, if I if if I need somebody to on my team to speak, is that possible?
Yes, that's fine.
This is Nicole Chivaco. I'm present.
Okay, Nicole, what do you have to say?
I'm also the president of the Edgewood Civic Association.
Um. So are you, what is your role with the team?
Well, I'm the president of the the Neighborhood Association that they presented to you back in two thousand nineteen.
Okay, terrific. Go ahead.
So what I want to say is, we love this project. We want this project. We need this project. However, we do see that the parking presents an issue. Um, what we're most concerned with is guests parking on the swale in particular on fifteenth because it's a very high traffic road. And on thirty uh or excuse me, thirty first, it's a very narrow road as it is. So if there's parking there, it's going to cause a problem. If we can somehow figure out a way to address this, we want this to happen wholeheartedly. We totally approve the project. But as you stated, the the parking, we see it being problematic and it's spilling out onto the road. But I did want to state um how much the community does want this because we do. We think it's a beautiful project and it's perfect for where it's placed and it will only bring positive to our community.
Thank you, Nicole. Um, Jackie, you have a hand up?
Yeah, is there, this is for staff. I don't know if it's Ben Restrepo or somebody from parking. Is there any way to treat the swale in a manner that uh they can park on the swale? In other words, you know, when they have to grass a swale in this, you know, they build this, it closes. Then people just like Pinecrest Apartments had the problem, I can name other places. And they just start tearing up the swale and this beautiful project starts looking really ugly for the neighborhood because of the lack of parking. Is there any way to solve that? Is there any type of swale that can be done other than grass and still then meet the code and provide a place for people to park?
So this is Ben, this is Benjamin Restrepo from Transportation Mobility. Um, the applicant definitely can uh design and construct parallel on-street parking and put in some type of uh inlet and store the water underneath the the parallel parking. Uh, they would just think to go back to DRC and review so the engineering and public works can review to make sure there's not adverse impacts to the the drainage situation on on the adjacent streets.
So that's positive. That's good.
Ben, so as not to hold the applicant up, could that be done like as an administrative review? Like if we were to approve this project tonight, could they? Um, let's see, site plan level three. So we are the approving body, is that correct?
That's correct, Chair.
So would they be able, as long as they're working on other things, to pursue an administrative change to the plans dealing with the swale if they desired?
Yes, if the board, if the board recommended that the change take place and um it would obviously be subject to city engineering, transportation, mobility review. Um, we could do that as a condition of your approval.
Excellent. Okay, and um, Mr. Rodriguez, what do you think about that?
Um, I would definitely like to um go through this with ownership. I I mean, if there's a solution that will um push us forward, we really don't want to get held up. This is projects is, it's been a while, you know, and um, but we we would like to investigate. If it's possible, we would like to investigate it, yes.
So as I understand it, you would, assuming the board approved it tonight, with the condition that you pursue an administrative change allowing parking on the swale, it might be a little more work for you all, but it wouldn't hold you up because it's going to take you a while to get permits, et cetera.
Yeah, I mean, we're we're, I mean, this is as long as we don't have to go back to the to 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 any of the planning uh back to the DRCs or anything like that, and we can push forward and we can add this to our next phase. I mean, it's only gonna uh it 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 that would be a efficient.
Okay, and and I understand, and Ella, Steve, you said that that could happen, correct? They will not have to come back to planning and zoning.
If that is the wish of the board to condition the approval based on staff reviewing these this um additional parking, I I would just say that the caveat would be, you know, staff would be reviewing things like drainage and any other impacts that the potential um construction of the parking. Um, you know, the those kinds of um technical issues would be reviewed as part of it. But yes, you can condition it upon that.
I I we as a design team and I'm, I mean, I'm parallel talking to my own ownership as we go. I can tell you guys that um we're willing to definitely looking forward to. Uh, we we will do uh anything that will be positive for 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 the project, for the neighborhood. And if we can get some couple of parking spaces on this swell and um make it work, we if but the only thing we ask the board, if we can push forward, I mean, if this could be done with the city, not back, going back to DRC, it would.
No, 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 we we understand, Mr. Rodriguez.
More hair in our heads.
Right. I have a couple of hands up. Mary, you were first. Mary? Mary, are you muted?
Catherine, I'm sorry. I was having a trouble getting off mute there. Um, okay, after that last conversation, I resolved a couple of my questions. But I I want to ask Shari, um, Shari, we can recommend as a condition that they have a review of staff for drainage and parking, but if staff determines, it doesn't, it it but but it that puts it back in staff's uh hands for whatever they've determined, we're we're saying pretty much just have the review. Is that right? I didn't phrase that well, but do you know what I'm saying?
Um, yeah, so it would be as a, it would be added to the conditions that are in your staff report for approval. So then it would go um for final DRC approval. And then if it is not approved, then of course, then it would have to come back again. So uh it it would just be a part of the conditions that you state tonight, a part of your approval. So I would just want you to clearly state what that condition is and then um we'll go forward from there. But it would have to come back if if it fails to get final DRC approval.
Wait a minute, the this is the question. I mean, you're saying that we will have to go back to DRC?
It's for final DRC approval. So after it gets approved to uh tonight, then of course you have to meet those conditions. If that condition that is stated tonight is not met, then it would have to come back. But if it's met, if you can work it out, then it it would not.
Mr. Rodriguez, you have to go through final DRC approval either way.
I thought this is already to planning zoning and we're going to push forward from there.
Well, okay, perhaps somebody on staff could take over on the process.
Now, I I will, I will clear with, I will clear that up. I, we just want to push forward.
The final DRC approval is for any project that comes before the planning and zoning board. It's no different than if you, if you didn't have this condition.
So Catherine, I'm ready with a motion whenever you're ready to hear it.
Mary, I still have a hands.
Thank you.
Okay, so Chambers, is it Jay?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Um, I I guess uh the thought I'm having here is, you know, the concern was over parking, you know, that that the site wouldn't be able to accommodate enough and that people would end up parking on the swale. Uh, and am I hearing correctly from the rest of the board that we would, we would per, that others on the board would prefer to establish, you know, formal parking spaces on the swell um so that grass isn't messed up? I I just don't, I just don't see the the.
Let me clarify, Jay. When whenever you have these beautiful swales and drawings and you have inadequate parking, people just start parking on the swale, destroying it. It turns out muddy, ugly. It's, it just doesn't work. And if there's a way to to provide parking that's defined, whether it's with what whatever medium other than grass, um, it'll it'll serve both purposes. It'll be aesthetically pleasing and it will accommodate additional cars without tearing it up because it's designed for parking.
Okay.
They like favors or um something. I'm sure the architect who did such a beautiful job on this project could come up with some sort of designated parking material that would match the project and alleviate the parking problem.
Right, I guess.
Still meet all the other requirements.
Yeah, I guess, I guess, um, you know, i- if we, while we talk through this, I just, it's a beautiful street, a lot of trees, you know, I don't. If we're, if we're suggesting that we should set precedent that there should be, you know, establish parking spaces on the swale, one, that doesn't address the neighborhood's concern that cars will be pulling in and out of the swale onto a busy street, it'll actually perpetuate it. And and two, um, I don't know if that's great precedent to set for, you know, beautifully treated street that might not otherwise have, you know, parking spaces on it.
It's going to happen anyway, Jay. Either do it right.
Thank you. Um, any more questions from Chambers? Okay, um, I uh, let's see, uh, we did the public hearing. Did I close the public hearing?
No.
Public hearing.
Oh, I don't believe so.
Okay. Tricia, do we have anyone else wishing to speak on this item?
No, we did not have anyone else sign up to speak.
All right, closing the public hearing. Jackie, I mean, I'm sorry, Mary?
Oh, yes, thank you. Okay, I move to approve adopting staff findings and conditions plus the condition of uh asking staff to review the drainage and parking to determine if parking on this well is possible.
Is there a second?
Incorporated and if it can be.
Is there a second?
Second.
Was that Jay?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, Shari, would you like to read the resolution?
A resolution of the Planning and Zoning Board of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, approving a site plan level three development permit for a five-unit cluster development located at fourteen thirty Southwest Thirty First Court, Fort Lauderdale, Florida, case number R one nine zero zero five.
Thank you. Um, Bridget, I believe we're ready.
Thank you. Mr. Rotella?
Yes.
Mr. Bronco?
Yes.
Mr. Waymouth?
Yes.
Mr. Scheckman?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Furtig?
Yes.
Um, Mr. Pruitt?
Yes.
Chair Moss?
Yes, motion here.
Thank you.
Honestly, good luck with Rodriguez. I don't think it's going to slow you up.
No, I I think it's a, it's a great, um, I I think it's going to work well for everybody.
Thank you. Item number three, uh, we have, thank you. We have, uh, it is quasi judicial PLN site two thousand and five triple zero five. disclosures, starting with Coleman.
I spoke with Mr. Lockery.
Um, Jackie?
Spoke with Mr. Lockery.
Jay?
Spoke with applicant's attorney and did a site visit.
Bill?
Spoke with applicant's attorney.
Mike?
Spoke with applicant's attorney and did a site visit.
With applicant's attorney and the site visit.
Brad?
Spoke with Mr. Lockery.
Mary?
I spoke with Mr. Lockery and I uh visited the site. Thank you.
And I spoke to Mr. Lockery and I also visited the site. Robert, you're up.
Good evening, Robert Lockery on behalf of the applicant. Uh, good evening to the chair, vice chair, members of the board. Um, my name is Robert Lockery. On behalf of the applicant, this is regarding a site plan approval for a property located at sixty-five hundred North Andrews Avenue. Um, the site itself is somewhat familiar to you all because you all have recently um been involved in another approval on the site. Just a little bit of background, and before I do, we do have representatives of the um development team, including Richard Munger, Brian Conde with Fairfield Residential. They're the developer of the residential and office building, as well as Victor, your architect, on the line and available if there's any questions. Um, the property is located within the city's new uptown zoning category. That was an overlay that the Planning and Zoning Board approved recently and then the City Commission approved. Um, as you all may know, the way that zoning works is an individual applicant notifies the city of their intent to have the property rezoned into that category. And then the city actually processes a site, a rezoning application, which occurred earlier this year when this property was rezoned into the um, the uptown uptown northeast district. Um, so as I said, the property is located sixty-five hundred and sixty-five twenty North Andrews Avenue. It is west of I ninety-five, which you see is the ribbon over here on the right, north of Cypress Creek and just to the east of Andrews Avenue. It shares an entrance on a private drive on the north side, which leads to the Zimmerman uh, the Zimmerman Office Building as well as Alpine Jaguar. This is a close-up of the site as it exists today. There's currently three office buildings on the site. And the proposal that's before you tonight includes the demolition of the northern um office building and the eastern office building. Um, we will keep the southern office building. And on the site, we will have a new development of two hundred and ninety-five residential units and about forty-six thousand square feet, about almost forty-seven thousand square feet of commercial uses. Um, I will go to the next slide, which will show you how that lays out. Um, the commercial uses are comprised of this existing office building on the south that will remain. A new office building of twenty-one thousand square feet that will be located here on the southwest corner of the site. Um, a new residential building with with a central garage located within with two hundred and ninety-five units and ground floor retail and commercial comprised of about twenty-three hundred square feet of commercial space and sixty-eight hundred square feet of residential, I mean, of uh of restaurant space. Um, consistent with the new design guidelines that the city has adopted, um, this project is before you because it is exceeds the seventy-five foot height that requires a conditional use approval. However, at eighty-six feet, and I'll show you the elevations in just a moment, we are well below um, the maximum one hundred and fifty feet that is allowed under the code. So we're basically in front of you as a conditional use because we're about eleven feet taller than the seventy-five feet. But again, well under the maximum required. Um, one of the things that's important about the project, as I show you the the actual um elevations, is that top portion of the project, the portion that goes above seventy-five feet, actually the portion that goes above seventy-four, sets back thirty feet from A- Andrews Avenue. So there's a significant setback. As part of the approval as well on your new code, um, there are a variety of design requirements and we are requesting um the alternative design solutions, which is permitted by your code. Um, and specifically three of those design elements. First of all, the building's um shoulder height. Um, and there's really two ways to look at this, whether we're looking at the shoulder height or the tower height. But the building's shoulder height under the, under the master plan and the zoning code as it's adopted, it's seventy-five feet or six stories. Our shoulder is actually at seventy-four feet, so we're a little bit lower than that maximum, but we do have seven stories. Um, in addition, we have an eighth floor, which I, as I indicated, is set back thirty feet from Andrews Avenue. Um, that would, if it was a tower element going up, you know, ten stories or fifteen stories, there'd be a floor plate restriction on it. But because it's only one more floor and actually operates almost as part of the podium, we think that fits in with our criteria. In addition, um, we have a turn lane, which we will be adding to this prop- property up on the north side, which will alleviate traffic on Andrews Avenue. It provides for more smooth traffic both into this site and our sites to the east. But as a consequence of that of that turn lane, um, one of the elements of the street lining that we would ordinarily provide will not be provided in this small segment. The remainder of the site will will keep that. In all dimensions, though, we will keep a full seven-foot wide sidewalk as well as landscaping between the sidewalk and the building. Couple other elements, I'll blow it up just a little bit, that the new code requires. Um, our additional landscape requirements that specifically about, for this site, about thirteen thousand. Square feet of landscape area. Um, we are exceeding that requirement. We include a pocket park, which is included right here between the new proposed office building. And the residential and retail building, as well as a plaza gather, gathering place at this location, both of which are connected by a ten foot. Um, I mean, I'm sorry, a, a corridor that's connected with a ten foot overhang. As well as landscape treatment, as I said, sidewalk all the way to the north of the site. What I'll do now is show you some of the. Elements of the building as you go around it. This is a view from the building if you were looking south on Andrews Avenue. Um, one of the elements that's included is the first floor is. A little bit higher than you would ordinarily do to give it real presence from the streetscape. Um, the, um, actual elevation from the ground floor to the ceiling of the first floor is sixteen feet. Again, so it has a real, um. Retail appearance at that location, as well as on the first two floors, the project includes. Um, enhanced architectural features, including stacked stone and glazing all the way along Andrews Avenue. The next view is another view looking directly to the west. Um, this is the residential building with the retail and restaurant on the ground floor. And the new office building that's just to the right, which is to the south of the site. Directly ahead, you see the pocket park that's being included, as well as the break of the building a little bit to the north right here, where is the gathering place in public plaza. Um, this is one of the views of the, um. Of the, uh, small park area where we have furniture, we have places for bikes, seating, et cetera, as well as enhanced landscaping. As well as the public gathering space, um, that's directly along Andrews Avenue. The next view shows the area kind of from a drone where you see both the residential building. Here you really see the effect of that step back up on the top floor. Um, so as I said, the, the eighth floor is set back thirty feet. So you really don't even see that extra elevation from Andrews Avenue. And the forefront is the new office building that'll serve as an anchor on the south side of the site. And meets all the dimensional requirements and requirements of the plan. Um, one of the other features that you'll see here is a dedicated bus bay, as well as the dedicated right turn lane that I described. This is a view of the project, again, looking directly across the street. This is kind of a night view. Next view is specifically of the office building, so you can see the architectural style both from Andrews. And then the back side as well, looking at it from the surface parking lot. Um, one of the other elements of the project is because we are including various different uses, residential and significant office. There's a shared, shared parking study that is also part of the application. Um, our parking consultant did an analysis. Based on ULI standards and other engineering standards on what the parking demands for the site would be. For the peak hour of demand, which is actually about eleven AM, both on the weekends and weekdays. Um, the max number of parking spaces that would be acquired for the site are six hundred and sixty one parking spaces. That's actually on the weekend. The site provides seven hundred and nine parking spaces. And that's really the element of having both office and residential uses that aren't always used at the same time. Um, the project was presented in, uh, two different public participation meetings. We had a public participation meeting in July. And then we met again with the uptown, um, council in October, presented the project, answered all questions. Um, that's our proposal. That's our presentation. We'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Robert. Uh, let's see here. Is it the desire of the board that the staff report be made a part of the record?
So moved.
Thank you, Jay. Jackie second? Thank you.
I second.
Thank you. All in favor, I?
Hi.
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 Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. I see no hands and, um. I'm missing Chambers right now. So, oh no, I see Chambers. I don't see anybody waving a hand. So I'm gonna open the public hearing. And ask if there's any member of the public wishing to speak on item number three, PLN site two thousand and five triple zero five.
Chair, we have two members of the public who signed up to speak. The first is Chuck Ludeman. He's, um, on the attendee list.
Thanks, Trish. Is Chess here? Mr. Ludeman or Ms. Ludeman?
Hello?
Hello.
Hello. Hi.
But.
Yeah, it's Mr. Ludeman, Chuck. Um. Good evening, board. I, I appreciate you taking the time, uh, and letting us speak. Um, I was actually engaged, uh. By the sixty four hundred ownership that owns the building directly to the south. And I'd like to start, you know, by saying that we're extremely excited about the project. I actually live in that area. Uh, very excited, um, and support it. We do have, uh, one request that. Uh, you know, in my research on their behalf, I was able to determine that Terry Stiles back in nineteen seventy nine. Uh, had, had created some kind of office park type of agreements in that area. And, um, in the early eighties, actually put a site plan in for the sixty four hundred building that's just to the south. And in that site planet included a access drive that connected. All those office parks together to create kind of a connectivity that flowed all the way down to. Uh, the nor, I believe it's northeast first street, uh, just to the south. And, um. There isn't any legal document for cross access for that, that drive that I was able to find. Um, but it has existed for the last twenty, thirty years. Um, I think they, I believe what I'm told by the case manager is the applicant is actually suggesting that it be closed. Um, in speaking with our traffic engineer, uh, he brought up the point that it's actually. Uh, something that's a preference of, of our first responders, especially the fire department. Uh, as it relates to life safety. Um, it actually, uh, also helps alleviate. Some of the traffic out there on Andrews. Uh, you know, speaking as a, a resident in that area. Uh, you know, I think a larger issue is that maybe there's a light. That, that should someday exist at that first street. Uh, major intersection that, that people are trying to cross Andrews to get to the retail center. They're trying to get out of. You know, those existing office buildings to make a left turn on Andrews to get to the lights. Um, we see a lot of accidents and, and, and it's just a real unsafe condition. So elimination of that. Cross, cross access drive. Um, between the properties, which doesn't appear to actually impact, negatively impact. Um, the, the applicant's proposed site plan, uh, as their parking starts a little further to the, to the east. Uh, I just don't see, if it, if it's not necessary to close it, why? You know, why give up something that is actually a benefit to our first responders and to, uh, alleviating traffic in the area?
Okay, so Mr. Ludeman, I believe that this proposal has been reviewed by, um. Police and fire, but let's, Robert, do you have any comment on this?
Yeah, certainly. And that, that Mr. Ludeman's question came up in the first public participation meeting we had. Um, we took a look at it as well. There is no, um, legal easement or other right of an adjacent property owner to cross this property. Um, there was a connection that is made. It's physically there today. However, it has been closed for a, a number of years. Um, the current property owner of the office building, which is on the south side, and he will retain ownership. Um, indicated to us that it has been closed for as long as he remembers is what he says. Um, a site visit will show you. It's actually. Bearicated right now with planners and landscaping. Our proposal is to make an improvement there to close that off and landscape it. Um, the question did come up, as I said, we took a look at it. We did not see any legal access. There is none. Um, in talking to that owner, he also was, our owner on our side was not supportive of it. Um, it did, we also addressed it with the case planner and with fire and it was determined that, uh, there would be no access, cross access there. Um, so I, well, I understand the concern. Mr. Ludeman's correct. It's not part of this proposal. Um, and we don't plan on it being in the proposal.
Okay.
Am I still unmuted?
Mr. Ludeman, you've had three minutes. I, I'll give you one more minute, okay?
I appreciate it. Yeah, there was actually, I have the email from fire where they actually made a, an official DRC, uh, comment. And the applicant, the applicant's response was that they were not going to, going to accommodate. It was, it was actually deemed that there is no specific code that requires it from life safety standpoint, but the fire department actually acknowledged that. It is a preference for first responders. Um, I think the fact that we have one ownership on the other side that, that prefers to not have it open. You know, I think it should be a consideration as it's a life safety, you know. It's a desire from first responders from a life safety standpoint. And we can, we can at least bring in a traffic engineer to do a little, to do a little more research on. Uh, what kind of impacts it's having on, uh, the traffic patterns and the accident rate out there on Andrews Avenue. I think the board is remiss in not letting us at least explore this a little more before allowing the applicant to close something that's been there for. Twenty some odd years. I think we do also have other people that are gonna be speaking.
Ten seconds, Mr. Ludeman.
That, that this access point has actually been open up until maybe the last year or so. Um, so the, the planters that were placed there by that, that other owner. Um, you know, we don't even know if that was actually done in any legal fashion.
Okay, so Mr. Ludeman, a- at the conclusion of the approval process of this project, they will need sign offs. From police and fire safety. So you keep alluding to some vague, um. Suggestion from the fire department that they're not happy, so they will have an opportunity to weigh in. Um, Tricia, do we have any other member? Thank you, Mr. Ludeman. Tricia, do we have any other member of the public wishing to speak on this item?
We had one other person sign up, uh, to speak and she is no longer on the attendee list. It's Katie Vaughn.
Katie, are you there?
I don't think she's here any longer. Um, we did have a number of other people that signed up to speak on the applicant's behalf, but just to double check to make sure that they. Are indeed part of the application team. Can we ask? For any attendee to raise their hand if they intend to speak. As part of the public comment.
Or any attendee wishing, anyone wishing to speak on this item. We are about to close the public hearing, so please raise your hand in the chat box. Let us know that you want to speak on this item.
I'm not seeing any hands yet.
Okay, thank you, Tricia.
Um, we just got one.
Okay.
Lisette Rivera. We'll unmute her.
Ms. Rivera? Hello? Yes, you have three minutes.
Okay. Good evening and thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak with you. My name is Lisette Rivera. I'm, I'm speaking on behalf of the ownership of the sixty four hundred North Andrews building. I'm the property manager of the location. And that access drive, as, uh, my coworker has said, has existed for as long as we could remember. Um, since it's been blocked, there's been a lot of, um. Accidents on that first street. There was a fatality that actually happened on Andrews Avenue within the last year. And also, we have a lot of tenants that have complained and. Each year, when I have my annual inspection with the fire department, they walk me over to the spot where these planners are and says, these need to go. They've actually parked there a couple on the sixty four hundred, sixty five hundred building parking lot and walked over to us and said. We couldn't get through. And we expressed to them that it's not part of our property and that the adjacent owner has put them up. And they said, well, that's a concern and they said themselves they were gonna go and address it. And to this date, the planners are there. There's times the planners are moved, but not necessarily in the same spot at all. Times, um, we have other tenants within that location that are medical use, so life safety. With the first responders having to get to the building is a great concern. As far as First Avenue, um, one thing we should keep in mind is. Sixty four hundred North Andrews, yes, it has two access points, but these access points all lead to northeast First Avenue. And law, northeast First Avenue, just to give you an idea of the traffic that, that goes on that road. Between the three office buildings that have to use that as an egress. There's three hundred and fifty six parking spots. So at one point in time, there can be a large volume of vehicles. And what we have to keep in mind, there has been several times where. It's difficult to get out of there because of the traffic backup. And a lot of the tenants. Are, you know, not happy with that because of the fact that in the past, we have tenants that were there before. The adjacent owner put these planners, so they know the difference of what the two areas are. And it's just. Really not well for everyone involved because. If there, we have one user in particular that performs surgeries in our building. If Fire Life comes to help somebody at the building, there's a possibility there's gonna be a delay because they can't get through. So I ask if we can possibly revisit this and. Possibly potentially keep it open. Ownership's willing to contribute to look into and as Chuck said, do some traffic studies. And hopefully we can come to a good resolution. I mean, you're gonna have a large volume of cars on the new redevelopment side. We're gonna have a lot of cars. So we need to do something to make sure that everyone has the proper egress because if there. For instance, northeast First Avenue dead ends. If there's some type of emergencies and the street is blocked or stuck.
Can you wrap up in, in less than sixty seconds?
Yes.
I just want to thank you, the members of the board for allowing me to, um, discuss this access agreement and, um.
Discussing with those owners to possibly continue to have that access available.
Um, my name is Mike Cohen. I'm a tenant. I don't know if you want to hear anything else about the.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Hold on, hold on, please.
Sure.
I, I'm, I'm running the meeting.
I'm sorry.
There are other hands raised. Would you be able to show us on a diagram the area that is under contention?
Yeah, I certainly can. If, if, if I can share my screen, I can describe the situation. All right. Can you all see this?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so, um, right now at Andrews Avenue, at the north end of our property. There's a private drive that comes into the property that serves our development site. As well as the office building that's to our east, as well as Alpine Jaguar. There's also a connection point up to the north here. So this driveway serves all of these properties essentially. On the south end of our property, which is right here. Um, there is a right in only. You can't make a left from southbound Andrews because of this median. What this median and turn lane provides is a left in for the property to the south, the sixty four hundred property. So one of the things I want to point out is the sixty four hundred properties. Access to that is, is a right in off of Andrews as well as a dedicated turn lane left in. Which serves this property as was described properties to the south. Um, there is no way to make a left from Andrews into this driveway. And this is the area that is, that is, uh, currently blocked off, has been for at least a couple of years. And is still proposed to. Um, I think what, what these folks are asking for is access that would allow them to, I mean. I guess come in from right, make a right turn in here, but you could obviously do that right from here. It could also relate to a left in here that then cuts all the way through this property and frankly. Complicates all the business activity that's going, going on through here as well. I think most important here is, as we described, you know, there is no legal access to an adjoining property here. Um, if there was an easement in place, obviously we would be providing for that. We are happy though to work at final DRC with the city on this issue. As I said, it was raised. It was discussed with the fire department. And, uh, as the case planner will tell you, the final result was that it, there is no requirement for it and therefore we're not, we were not providing for it. But if it's something that needs, needs to be looked at at final DRC from a legal standpoint, we're happy to do so.
Thank you so much, Robert. Tricia, do we have any other members of the public wishing to speak on this item?
No, we did not have anyone else sign up or, uh, raise their hands.
Okay, so who is Michael Cohen, Tricia? And why is he on our screen?
I'm not sure.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes, um, thank you.
Well, no, 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 Mr. Cohen, let me just say a few things. Um, you, you are a resident of the sixty four hundred building? Pardon me? Mr. Cohen?
I am a resident of the sixty four hundred.
So, Mr. Cohen, I'm going to give you, even though you are not registered for this meeting, happy to hear from you. You have three minutes, okay?
Thank you. And, and I do apologize just I did try to register last night and I.
No problem, don't.
Yeah. I'm, uh, in suite five oh five of the sixty four hundred North Andrews building. I'm a lawyer. Uh, I'm a board certified criminal trial lawyer and a former assistant United States attorney. Um, what Lisette was talking about. On northeast First Avenue and the planters, uh, on the right hand side of the properties are true. I've been in that building for many years and it used to be a lot more convenient when the planters weren't there and you can get out. Through that exitway on the right hand side of the building. and you can get out through that exitway on the right hand side of the building. There have been some awful, awful accidents, which I visualized from my suite in suite 505, right outside Northeast First Avenue, because the only way out is you either go right or you go across to the shopping center across the street. So I just wanted to point out, and I don't have any dog in this race, okay? I just want to point out that that only being the entrance on Northeast First Avenue was a very dangerous situation. And I have nothing else to say apart from that. And I appreciate the board's time.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. I do have some board, let me ask this. Are there any other members of the public wishing to speak on this item?
I don't see any other hands raised.
Thank you, Trish. I am closing the public hearing and I do have a couple of hands raised. Jay, I'll get to you, but first Coleman.
Thanks, Catherine. I just wanted to point out, I don't know if everyone remembers this, but in the staff report, first condition is that a traffic study be completed. So it sounds like a lot of the concerns that have been raised here tonight will be addressed there. And that's probably the proper vehicle to address them.
Thank you, Coleman. Let's see, Mary? Mary, unmute yourself.
Yes, I am. I'm just ready to make a motion when you're ready to hear it, so.
Okay, we're not, we're not quite ready. Jay?
Yeah, I mean, I'm interested in hearing from some of these public member speakers or from anybody. It sounds like Northeast First Avenue is the dangerous situation and that's that's the road to the south. And, you know, is it that making a left hand turn out of there is what's dangerous? I don't know if Mr. Cohen is there still or or if Robert, you know.
All right, Mr. Cohen, are you with us?
Yes, I'm with you.
Okay, Mr. Cohen, you have 30 seconds to respond to that question.
Yeah, well, there's no light at that intersection, you see. So when you're making a left, definitely, it can be very dangerous. And when you're making a right, if the traffic gets backed up, it can be problematic also. So that Northeast First Avenue being the only way out is problematic. Like I said, before the planters were in place, it just used to be much, much easier if you were heading on Andrews Avenue, I think, north. Would that be north on Andrews Avenue? Or south on Andrews Avenue? I'm not sure. But whatever the right hand turn from the adjacent parking lot to where the planters are now located, it used to be a lot easier situation.
Mr. Cohen. I'm up, sir. Thank you very much. And as I understand it, that's not the only exit from the property. So let's see. Robert, did you want to respond to that?
No, again, I mean, look, I totally understand adjoining property under wanting every access point you can get. I mean, it's, I understand the request, but we, there's a lot of traffic being generated on our side, you know, on the north side. They've got traffic on their side. Their side is to the south. Our exit is to the north. And as was, I think, as was being suggested, you know, the the direct access point that they want connection to, you can't make a left out on Andrews anyway. And you can't make a left in. So it really doesn't alleviate that issue.
Okay, terrific. Thank you, Robert. Mary, are yours, is your hand still up for a motion?
Yes.
Okay, Coleman?
Yes. Oh, take mine down, sorry. I'm down.
Okay, thank you. Chambers, anybody? All right, Mary, you're up.
Bill has a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, Bill.
Robert, I just had a couple of questions as it relates to the retail and the restaurant portion of this property.
Yeah.
And, you know, I've looked through these plans, but one, there's obviously no parking in front of this project, you know, that would, that, you know, services. One of these, it sounds like, is intended to be potentially a restaurant, one retail. So I'm assuming most of that parking is is all provided for in the garage?
That's correct. So the parking, rather than having, rather than having surface parking between, you know, those uses in the street, the city zoning wants to see the building up on the street. So we put the parking in the garage. There is an entrance exit from the garage into the pocket park, which then will be the route out to the front, to the restaurant space and the retail space.
In the loading and unloading for these, for the restaurant and retail?
That all occurs in the garage as well. So that all happens on site.
And you got enough height in there to get whatever size truck?
Yeah, that's, that's correct. We've actually, that first floor is a four and a half, so to speak. So yes, there is, there is sufficient height for that.
And that's also, I assume, where all the dumpsters and trash are picked up there?
Yeah, we've got it either there or in the back there up against, you know, where you end up looking out to I-95. But it is included, most of that is included within the garage. That's correct.
And I thought I saw in one of the renderings that you showed, it looked like there might be some outdoor seating, which certainly in today's environment, you know, one would have to hope that a restaurant tenant would have. Is there, is there an anticipation of outdoor seating for that restaurant?
There is. And the outdoor seating is again on the west side of the property. It's around the plaza gathering area and there's a covered arcade as well. We were where the potential tenant can do outdoor seating in addition to that. It's about 10 feet wide.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I do not have any hands raised and Chambers' hands are not raised. So I do believe we have a correction to the staff report. Jim, are you with us?
Yes, good evening. Jim Hetzel, principal planner, case planner. I'd like to make a correction on the staff report, page nine. Condition number one, it should read as follows. Per the city's transportation mobility department, prior to final DRC, the applicant shall complete the traffic study and implement any mitigation measures resulting from the completion of the traffic study, which such measures, I'm sorry, excuse me, which such mitigation measures being implemented or as approved as part of an agreement, as the case may be, prior to the issuance of the building's certificate of occupancy.
So Jim, could I ask a layman's question? Does that have any impact on some of the discussions we've been having about traffic circulation on this project?
So it may have some impact. The, I believe, part of the traffic study is looking at the first avenue intersection with Andrews and the impact on what everything was brought up this evening about traffic concerns and safety. The completion of the traffic study is not done yet, but that's what this condition will cover.
Terrific, thank you so much.
And we do, the applicant does accept that change in all the conditions of approval, so.
Thank you, Robert. Mary?
Oh, thank you, Catherine. Okay. I moved to adopt staff findings and conditions, including the changes that Jim just made. But I'm going to ask that we add a condition that staff review the ingress egress in context of the police and fire and emergency response issue as part of. And we can add that to number one if that makes it smoother. Or we can just make it a separate thing that when they do their final DRC review. And I think Robert said that they were willing to have it discussed.
Okay, is that right, Robert?
Yeah, we can certainly discuss that, absolutely.
Okay, terrific.
And, and you know, there is a distinction here too between police and fire and the general public as well. So we're happy to understand that condition, yeah.
Thank you, Robert. Is there a second to Mary's motion? Is there a second to Mary's motion?
Is Mary's motion to accept?
Yes, it is.
I second the motion. Bill will tell.
Bill, thank you. Okay, Shari, would you like to read the resolution?
Yes. A resolution of the Planning and Zoning Board of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, approving a conditional use permit for a mixed use development, which includes restaurant space, retail space, and office buildings located at 6,500 and 6,520 North Andrews Avenue, Fort Lauderdale, Florida. It includes a height increase from 75 feet to 86 feet. Allocation of 295 residential flex units, which includes eight affordable housing units and a park reduction. Case number PLN S I T E 2005 0005.
Thank you so much, Shari. Bridget, we are ready.
And so am I. Mr. Baranco?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Wayman?
Yes.
Mr. Sheckman?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Furtick?
Yes.
Mr. Pruitt?
Yes.
Mr. Rotella?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Moss, Chair Moss?
Yes, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to our last item, PLN ULDR 2001 0001. It is not quasi judicial, so I am going to cede the floor to Tricia.
Hi, good evening, Chair and members of the board. Tricia Logan, Historic Preservation Planner with Urban Design and Planning. I'm here with you tonight again to talk about the TDR program and the proposed ordinance. Last time we met, the board asked for several items to be addressed that were included as part of the discussion last month. So I'll just review what those are. These are also included in the staff report. The first was to incorporate the language that was suggested to allow for properties that had been identified as eligible for historic designation to be able to apply for a certificate of eligibility. This language was incorporated into the draft ordinance and it does include two new definitions, a list of criteria for the qualified eligible historic resources, and also a requirement for designation for these properties prior for, prior to applying for a certificate of transfer. The second point was to allow for density and floor area of the existing structures to be included in the calculation of what is available to transfer. And we discussed this at the last meeting, but it isn't consistent with the Broward County Land Use Plan, where it does identify that you can only transfer the unbuilt and permitted uses. And then it's also not consistent with what is perceived as a standard calculation for TDRs, which is typically the difference between the total of what you're permitted to build and the difference of what you actually have on your site. And then the third point that was brought up was the ability for a receiving site to retransfer TDRs once they're purchased. We did incorporate language to allow this, but the receiving site would then have to become a sending site and fulfill the criteria that's listed in that section of the ordinance. And the fourth item was to remove or extend the 18 month expiration of the certificate of eligibility. Staff still has concerns over potential changes to the site, including changes to the ULDR or zoning or a potential addition that would alter the eligible rights that the property would have. So we do want to maintain the 18 month expiration date. But it doesn't, it still allows for the sending property to to reapply after the certificate of eligibility has expired. A couple of other modifications have been changed or have been included since we did advertise the the draft ordinance. So I just wanted to point those out. And Ella did email this to you guys earlier today. But on page three of the updated proposed ordinance, we've further expanded on what is allowed to be transferred into the receiving sites, specifically for the Uptown Urban Village and for the Unified Flex Zone, both which allow an additional 10 units per acre, but to make that more expressly stated within the text. And then on page nine, just removing the word density from the reference to the comprehensive plan. And then on page four, continued in the designated receiving areas section, we made an adjustment to how the barrier island is described within the proposed text to say that any property located east of the intercoastal waterway within the boundaries of the city of Fort Lauderdale is what the barrier island means within the TDR program. And those are all of the changes. And that concludes my presentation.
Tricia, thank you. Is it the desire of the board to include the staff report in the record tonight? Jackie?
Yes.
Thank you, Mary.
Yes, yes. Thank you. Second, yeah, that's what I'm doing. I'm seconding, seconding.
All in favor, I?
I.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Are there any members of the public wishing to speak on this item?
Good evening, Madam Chair. This is Jim. I'm covering the public participation speakers for this item. The first name on the list is William Brown.
Mr. Brown? Mr. Brown? Do you want to come back to him?
Can you hear me, Madam Chair?
Yes, yes, I can, Mr. Brown.
Good evening, Madam Chair Moss.
Yes.
Members of the board.
You have three minutes.
Well, I won't take three minutes of your time. I'll just be very brief because I know it's been a long evening for you and thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak on behalf of the Central Beach Alliance. We strongly stand by and support the change in language on page four on the definition of what is the barrier island and everything east of the intercoastal as it was presented to our membership and to our board as to what the barrier island is and includes and in the land on that barrier island. And even several presidents of many of the condo associations have called me today in support of making sure that we had that clarification. I want to thank staff for making that correction and getting that clarification. And I think it's in the best interest, not only for the citizenry of Fort Lauderdale, but also working with land use attorneys and smart growth and development as we look forward to a prosperous and smart growth development of the city of Fort Lauderdale. And I, and I just want to thank you for allowing the opportunity for me to speak and for you taking staff recommendations included for the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Tricia, do we have any other members of the public wishing to speak on this item?
I like to go by Jim, but that's okay. That's okay, I'm just, I'm just.
Pretty funny.
Name on the list is Richie Harris, but he looks like he is not on. He looked like he dropped off.
Mr. Harris? Okay, we can come back to him.
The next is Paul Chetl.
Mr. Chetl?
He has to star six to unmute because he called in.
Mr. Chetl, star six?
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the Planning and Zoning Board and Jim and Tricia. Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Excellent. I just wanted to thank city staff for just fixing that slight hole in the language regarding the barrier island. I did comply with a request on the city website to send you an email 48 hours in advance. So if you have that, the issue has been addressed by that change in language on four. And if you do have any friends that live on the barrier island in Harbor Inlet, for example, feel free to make fun of them that they don't, under the city code of ordinance, don't actually live on the barrier island. Other than that, everything else is good. Thank you very much for the change and good night.
Thank you, Mr. Chetl. Tricia or Jim? Jim, any other members of the public wishing to speak on this item?
There's no more signed up, but there are a couple attendees. So I'll just give a moment to see if any of the attendees would like to speak. They raise their hand, please.
Thank you. Hello?
I do not see any hands going up, so that's it.
Okay, so I have a question from Chambers. Bill, Mike, Jay?
Hi, Madam Chair, this is Jay. Couple of questions for Tricia on, so for the first item that you reviewed as a potential change, it said in the bullets, there's a requirement for designation prior to applying for a certificate of transfer?
Correct.
Is that, is that stated in the correct order that, you know, that you need to designate the property prior to applying for a certificate of transfer? Or, or is, was that meant to say that you can apply for the certificate of transfer before designating the property?
No, you can apply for a certificate of eligibility without designating the property, but meeting one of the criteria as being qualified as eligible. But you cannot proceed with a certificate of transfer until you're designated.
Okay.
That's the actual transaction.
And did, and did staff make any changes that makes it clear that you can apply for a certificate of eligibility prior to the?
Yes, it is outlined in the section related to the certificate of eligibility. and the criteria that would need to be met as part of that.
Great.
That section.
Thank you, that answers my first question. My second question is regarding, you know, sending rights for a property which has received them to be able to send rights again to another receiving site. You mentioned that in order to do so, they would need to meet the qualifications for a sending site. Is that not the designation of property to the historic?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so a receiving site in the Uptown Urban Village, for example, in order to send, in order to then send the rights to another property, they would have to be designated as historic, even if it's a building that was built five years ago and wouldn't otherwise qualify for historic designation.
Correct.
Okay, thank you, that answers my question. I would just say that I think that we've come a really long way, and, you know, there's been a number of changes which have made this a lot better, and I think staff and everybody involved in the process should just be commended. I do see a flaw in, you know, in that particular item that we just mentioned, but I do feel like we've come a really long way from when we first look at this. So I commend everybody's effort in making changes that the Board has suggested.
Thank you, Jay. I?
Madam Chair, a hand went up right when Jay was speaking, this is Jim, just want to point that out to you.
Go ahead, Jim.
That person is Patricia Halliday.
Ms. Halliday?
Yes, hello, Madam Chair. I, you don't need to waste any time with me, my question was answered, and I want to thank you for, for staff for clarifying the barrier island situation. We now know where, where the situation is and what that situation is. So I want to thank you all very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you very much, and you have a good evening. Let's see, so Jim, any other members of the public wishing to speak on this item?
No, no, not at this time.
Okay, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the Board. Mary? Mary, are you here?
Yes, I, I'm, I'm just agreeing to, unless somebody else wants to make the motion, I feel we've done this three months in a row, we've seen the changes, they've worked really hard on it. At this time, I think we move it forward to the Commission.
Okay, hold on, there's one other hand up, let me make sure it's not an issue. Jackie?
Yeah, I was just going to make a motion to send it along to the Commission.
Okay, hold on, you can be second. Mary? Oh, wait, wait, there's somebody in chambers, okay, chambers?
It's Bill Rotella, and it was really just a comment. I appreciated getting this, this afternoon, this revised notes here, and I also appreciated getting them in color. Almost everything that gets delivered to my office is in black and white, and if there's been a change made from the first ordinance to the second to the third, it's hard to tell what exactly has changed, you continue to read through them.
I agree.
Just suggest as we get them, as we get them going forward where there's changes being made, to get those things in color would be a lot more helpful for us. So it was great getting this one this afternoon, it really clarified things for me, thank you.
Thank you, Bill, I think you're talking about redlining copies, and that's perfect. Anybody else in chambers? Jay?
Yes, I would just, and I'm happy to make the motion as well, as I mentioned, I think we've come a really long way. I would just suggest that whoever does make the motion, recommend that a receiving site automatically be, recommend to the Commission that they consider a change where a receiving site would then qualify as a future sending site, because I don't think that as it's structured currently, it really mitigates the, you know, that issue that we had identified.
Madam Chair, may I respond, this is Shari.
Yes, Shari.
Yeah, the reason why that is not in the, in the proposed code is in the Broward County Land Use Plan, it clearly states in Policy 2.34.1 that ascending area must further a public purpose, and it has to protect historic and archaeological resources. The objective of this ordinance is historic preservation. So that in and of itself, just because someone, you know, is unable to transfer, that alone is not a reason to, for the public purpose of protecting archaeological and historic resources. So just to be clear for the record, we are in compliance with the Broward County Land Use Plan.
Thank you so much, Shari. Jackie?
I just want to make one last comment, because I've obviously been very verbal on this ordinance and topic, and I do want to thank staff for the changes they've made, and I hope that we'll continue to, as Ella says, add more things in our toolbox to encourage historic preservation and make it equitable for everyone.
Thank you, Jackie. Back to Mary.
Just agreeing to, with everyone, I commend Shari and Tricia and Ella and the entire staff. I know we've like really covered this way more than you ever thought, but at least you know we're reading what you do. So with that, I move to approve and send it to the Commission.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mary, second by Jay. Any discussion on the motion? Bridgette, I think we're ready.
Okay, Mr. Wayman?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
I was just going to say, I think you are too.
I didn't realize it was so funny. Okay, Mr. Wayman said yes?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Scheckman?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes. He says yes to it.
Oh, that's two yeses, okay. Vice Chair Furtig?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Pruitt?
Yes.
Mr. Rotella?
Yes.
Mr. Bronco?
Yes.
Chair Moss?
Yes, motion carries unanimously.
Just to clarify for the record, if I may, to move it to the Commission means recommend approval, correct? I just want to, okay, thank you.
Thank you so much, staff, Tricia, yeoman's effort, thank you so much, and Board, thank you. Now, communication to the City Commission, I'll start. Bill, Mike, and Jay, are you guys comfortable in City Commission chambers? I only asked this.
Yes.
Okay, so.
All three say yes.
Okay, all right. Anybody else with anything under communication to the City Commission?
I wonder, I, I.
Jackie?
All right, Jackie.
Catherine, what was your real question about asking if they were comfortable?
Well.
As related to what?
We were squirming a little.
No, it wasn't the squirming, Mike, it was that if we're all virtual, then staff can be virtual. But with you guys in the chamber, staff is in the chambers, and I just wondered if, I don't know, if there was an opportunity to save staff from having to attend the meeting in person?
Yeah, it'd be nice if we were all virtual or all in the chamber, and I think quite a few of us are not comfortable being in the chamber. So would you guys consider being virtual?
Was that question asked of the Mayor, because I know the Mayor attends the, the meetings in person as well.
And would us, and would us participating virtually, you know, then allow for staff to not have to come in anyway?
Well, yes, I think it would, Jay. Mike, I don't know, if you're comfortable, if you like going in person, then go, go in person. Yeah.
This is Shari, Madam Chair. We wanted to get clarification, meaning staff, on how you want these meetings to go forward, because we want to make sure that we notice it appropriately. So you have a choice if you want to go all virtual or some in person doing a hybrid, but we just wanted to be clear for a motion of, with a motion of how you want to go forward with these meetings, because as you said, if you're all virtual, then there's no need for staff to be there.
Can we do, can we do it, Shari? Can we like discuss it now, and if we all agreed that next month, especially based on what's going on with these numbers, that next month we're going to be all virtual? And then, you know, the following month, I mean, it's all going to change, but it seems to be better.
You can, but the issue is that we wanted to be able to notice, send out the notice in advance, so we know, but we just didn't want to keep bringing it up, we kind of wanted to know how you want to go forward. But if you want to do it month to month, just know that we have to know a month in advance. We just have a motion.
If we decide tonight that we think it's prudent to be virtual in January, and those guys agree, then we know that you can notice it, and we're going to be virtual. Or maybe we say for January and February, and then revisit the issue.
Let me jump in, Jackie.
Sure.
Thank you, Shari. Bill, Mike, Jay, how would you like to attend the January meeting?
I would prefer to attend in chambers.
Okay, Bill?
Whatever works for the group.
Okay, Jay?
If the meeting involves an element of chambers, I would prefer to be in chambers. I am also okay if attending virtually, if that, you know, if there is no, I think.
I'll expand a little bit also, if you will. When we have these presentations in person here, as we did tonight and as we did last month, it carries a different dynamic than, you know, sitting at home and not getting the interaction with the applicants and staff and so on. So it's certainly not something to rebuke the staff for doing. It's just, I think these meetings were designed to be done in person, and that's why I feel it should be that way. I don't necessarily want to force staff to come, I'm not sure what the rules are in the city, but I would prefer to do it in person, if I have the option. If I don't have the option, then I don't have the option.
We just need to get a majority vote from the Board either way, so we just.
So is this, does this be voted on, Shari?
Yes, please. So you could do it month to month or two months, whatever you'd like, but we just need clarification on how you want it, so that we know what to do going forward.
Terrific, could I have a motion on January and February?
I move that we, I move that we have our meetings for January and February virtually, and then reconsider after that.
Is there a second?
What's going on?
Thank you, is there a second?
I'll second that, John Bronco.
Thank you, John. Bridgette, let's do a roll call.
Yes, sorry, couldn't unmute. Okay, okay, um, Mr. Cohen?
No.
Ms. Chair, Vice Chair Furtig, sorry.
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Pruitt?
Yes.
Mr. Rotella?
Yes.
Mr. Bronco?
Yes.
Mr. Wayman?
No.
Mr. Scheckman?
No.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Chair Moss?
Yes.
The yeses carry.
Okay, thank you, so I believe that means we will be attending virtually for January and February, and in February, we will revisit it for the March meeting. Is that good, Shari?
Yes, that's perfect, thank you very much.
Okay, all right, how about for the good of the city? Does anyone have anything?
May I ask a question? There were some comments made about the parking for cluster developments. Did you all want to send any communication to the Commission regarding that? Because we were open to amending the code if that's what you suggest.
Shari, I don't think it's the first time we would be sending communication to the City Commission on parking for cluster dwellings. Mary?
Do we have to ask the Commission in order for us to review it? And if so, then yes, let's ask them. Maybe it'll be fine, but if something keeps coming up, then we ought to at least look at it and see what, you know, what we want to do about it.
I agree.
Was that a motion, Shari? I don't know.
Well, if you could just state the motion quickly, so that they understand what the problem is.
Well, do we have to make a motion to review it? In other words, we have to ask their permission to review it?
I think, yes, you do, because it would utilize staff resources and.
Okay, all right, so then I'm moving that we request that the Commission authorize us to review the parking, well, let's just put the cluster development.
Townhouses.
Huh?
Townhouses.
And townhouses, okay, sure.
Same thing.
I second.
And that's for staff to review with a possible amendment to the code? Is that?
Yeah, that's good, for staff to review it and bring forward any proposals.
Is there any question?
May I just ask a question? Because usually when these things come up, the Mayor asks if anyone is from Planning and Zoning Board that can explain what the problem is, and sometimes folks are there and sometimes they're not. I just wanted to know if you wanted to send someone to talk about it?
Send the Chair.
We, we will send someone to talk about it, I'm happy to go. Mike, you want to join me?
No, ma'am, thank you.
I think the dog should go.
So yes, I'll be there.
Okay, is there a vote?
So we have a motion in a second. Shari, anything else before we need to vote?
No, that's it, thank you.
I have a question, Madam Chair, this is Bridgette. I'm not 100% clear on the communication.
Okay.
Motion to request the Commission authorize Planning and Zoning Board to review cluster development and townhouses with possible changes to the code?
Parking requirements, cluster dwellings and townhouses.
Bridgette, I believe that Mary had said she changed it to staff to review with a possible amendment to the code, staff to review it.
That's what I thought, too.
And I left it the whole thing, because if staff sees anything, then why not just bring that, so we don't have to go back again?
All right, so now I'm really confused. What is it?
To ask them to authorize staff to review the.
Oh, staff to review, thank you.
Yes, and bring forward any suggestions to this Planning and Zoning Board.
On parking requirements for cluster dwellings and.
Got it.
I think they should review the whole thing, but I'll go with whatever.
Okay, I got it.
Thank you.
You ready for?
We're ready.
Roll call? Okay. Ms. Vice Furtig?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Pruitt?
Yes.
Mr. Rotella? I'm going to try.
I don't think that came across clearly, Bill.
I'm just trying to figure out what the most, there was so much confusion there, what exactly is?
Sure, so this is a motion by Mary to ask staff to review parking requirements relating to cluster dwellings and townhouses with an eye towards the City Commission making, amending the code in that area.
Okay, yes.
Okay. Mr. Bronco? Mr. Bronco, are you?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Wayman?
Yes.
Mr. Scheckman?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Is that one vote or two?
Just one.
Okay.
He's going to play with his turtles.
Thank you, Ms. Chair Moss?
Yes.
Thank you.
Are there any other communications for the good of the city?
Yes, Chair.
Jay?
I can't help every day, but notice just how unsafe conditions are for crossing the New River for people on bicycles, scooters, rollerblades. Third Avenue Bridge especially, there's nothing to stop people who are walking on the sidewalk. You know, there's no barricade to protect people from, from the cars, and the issue is, you know, you have bicycles and scooters or, you know, all these different 15 mile per hour, you know, micro mobility devices that are, that, you know, surprise people who might be walking down the bridge or coming up the bridge, and it's very concerning to think that people can, you know, out of fright, like jump to the left and then, you know, be right in the way of oncoming traffic. You know, the only, the only safe, protected way to get across the river today is on Andrews Avenue. And I, I really think that we should send a commission, communication to the Commission that something needs to be done. that something needs to be done, you know, in short order to improve, improve safety for, for people, for bicyclists and for micro mobility users to get across the New River.
Jay, thank you. I am someone who on occasion bikes to work and I cross the river at Third Avenue. And more often than not, I get off my bike and I walk it across because there's so many people now walking across the bridge. And I just think it's a common courtesy kind of thing. Scooters could do the same thing. I certainly don't want to be out in traffic, crossing the Third Avenue Bridge. So if I were to have to come up with a proposal for making crossing Third Avenue safer, I would say we require everyone to walk across that bridge with their scooter, with their bike, with whatever. But that would do it. And it's, it's not an inconvenience. It's, you know, a couple hundred feet. What do you think about that?
I think, I'm glad I brought this to the board's attention today. I think that, you know, when we first outright rejected the county and state's proposal to create a pedestrian bridge, an iconic pedestrian bridge across the river, rather than doing so, we should have asked them to create some type of adjacent, you know, pathway to the Andrews Avenue or Third Avenue Bridge that could have been used for bicycles and, you know, gone up concurrently, up and down concurrently with the existing bridges. You know, and, and this, you know, after we had outright rejected that, we did send a letter as a city to, to those parties, the MPO and the state, and they came back and said it was too late. They had already allocated that funding to something else. So what I'll do is circle back up with transportation and mobility and see where that ended up. Because they did suggest that we as a city could reinitiate that request and work along with the MPO. So if there hasn't been any movement there, I would ask that at the next meeting that we send a communication to the commission, asking them to pursue this.
To pursue?
Catherine, this is Brad Cohen. I do like your idea for a temporary fix. I think that recommending that people walk their bicycles across the bridge, not just that bridge, I think all the bridges. Because I've walked or jogged down to the beach and people come up going both ways on bicycles, super dangerous. It's like, because they, you know, they're trying to get by and there's a lot of people walking. I really like that idea. So I would be in favor of that idea, recommending it to the city, albeit, you know, a solution in the future. But that's a very good idea, a temporary idea for now.
And I like, this is Mary. I like, I know you can take my hand down. I like, I think what Jay was suggesting, at least how I took it, was that the city should review all bridges in context of safety and mobility. And maybe what will come forward is your suggestion, but I think that's a really, I think it's a really timely request. And I just, you know, we have to have permission from somebody to go ahead and do it. Those of us on the Los Angeles Mobility Group have already been talking about a number of bridges. And there are bridge master plans. So Jay, I think that's a great idea. And whenever you suggest it, I'm happy to second it.
So Jay, would you repeat your motion?
Well, I'm going to suggest that we, you know, we discussed this here now. I wanted, you know, we got the juices flowing. I would like to follow up with the city individually and find out where, where that request to, you know, research options for concurrent, you know, attachments to either Andrews Avenue or Third Avenue Bridge, potentially even funded by the state, where that ended up. And to see if that's something that, if it just kind of, you know, hasn't moved along because, you know, it's not, it's not on a priority of the city currently, that at the next meeting in January, we can, we can send a communication to the commission, asking them to reopen that.
Terrific. I see that Michael's juices are flowing. Yes, Michael?
No, my juices aren't flowing. I'm trying to get to the bar to get a glass of wine to get my juices flowing. But what I don't want to do is waste a lot of juices. I appreciate what you're saying, Jay. I believe the right form for this. Ella, correct me if I'm wrong, is the Army Corps of Engineers. So while I can understand that you want to take it to the city commission, I think ultimately it ends up in the lap of the Army Corps of Engineers. So I think it would be fruitless for us to make motions and send stuff up there. If somebody can double check that and then next month it is the right direction, then we go down that. But I believe, I believe all these bridges are the Army Corps of Engineers.
All right, so proposal. Jay, you do the background work that you'd like to do. Ella will check out whether or not we have jurisdiction and we'll revisit this in January.
And Catherine, I'm so impressed that you're biking to work.
Thank you, Mary.
You're a model for us all.
All right, anything else under for the good of the city? I see nothing. I hear nothing. Okay, so is there a motion to adjourn? Can we all agree we're adjourned?
Yes, yes.
More adjourned.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, everybody.